I will call this um roundtable meeting to order here in the hall room, pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to their obligation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Will the person resign if you have an implication this evening? Okay. And we have no more electronic attendance, roll call, please. Call the person Murphy.
Present.
Who's here?
Present.
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 Can you?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Astro?
Present.
Yeah.
Present.
Alright, uh, are there any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, is there a public comment this evening? No, okay, so we will move right into our roundtable discussion, Mr. Rita. Twenty twenty four capital improvement plan discussion.
Our job tonight is to enlighten. That's the best way to describe it. For those of you who have been here the last two years, you pretty much know the routine. Those who were first time to get the information we had some significant investment in the city and in the community. For all things infrastructure, including in our our facilities as well. So this evening Carol is going to take you through a presentation and David will take you through his presentation of C I P. You know, and then at the end, I'm going to wrap it up by discussing these items that are behind me on the board and how it impacts future decision making. After you get all this information first. So. I alluded to it, that there were budgetary pressures and that's what this is. So I want to be able to be fair with you so we understand why when we make our recommendations, you make your policy decisions that were in alignment on the same page, moving forward together. So it won't be easy, but we're going to get it there. Well, we still do a great job, so we'll get out Carol.
Great. The first thing I'm going to do is put your mind in your pocket. And then we're going to take a few minutes. And the mayor's smiling, I really also say that.
Thank you.
I know, but the main thing is I want you to know that the C I P that David, Tony and Mary are going to be presenting tonight with projects. Across the board, we are balanced with existing revenue stream. And what that means as we go through it is that you can certainly move projects between years or you can exchange a project if you have a different priority than what's being presented. But the dollars are worth it. And so I'm just very rapidly going to go through financials. You're going to see a lot of these as we go through the budget process coming up in a couple of months. But you'll just get a little bit of a feel from the budget. So the very first one that you'll see there is for the capital improvement fund. There are two revenue streams in our capital improvement fund. If you look at the very bottom of the page, it is home rule sales tax and utility tax. And we have a fund balance policy where we try to keep a minimum of three hundred thousand. So as we spend projects, we we want to spend all the projects we can to get it down to three hundred thousand in each one of those individual funds. And if you look across the board through two thousand and twenty six, you'll see sales tax for home rule in the range of the three hundred thousand. Same thing for utility tax, total in the six hundred thousand range. So we are right on target with the funding that is available. Um, they have projects to go with that. The next page is our motor fuel fund. Motor fuel tax, and it's the same thing. We have, um, we try to maintain a balance of about three hundred thousand. I'm going to take you to the very bottom of the page as well. This is third through twenty twenty six. You'll see in the first couple of years in twenty twenty three especially, we have a little bit of hangover of the M F T state rebuild money that is a grant that we are spending in twenty three. Light bit of carryover into twenty four. So we have five hundred and fifty five thousand in twenty three, but then we get down into that three hundred thousand range each of those next three years. So again, we're right on target. I might just mention up at the top. Um, the annual M F T that we get from the state is a little over um a million seven hundred and fifty thousand. It ranges from a million seven sixty five up to a million eight during this C I P period, if you see that line, first revenue line. Then in addition, um, David and his staff do an outstanding job of giving state and federal grants. And you'll see some very large grant money from the federal line, twelve million in twenty five. Um, and we're going to be talking about those as David goes through his presentation, but um, if it wasn't for the state and federal grants, our C I P would be much, much lower. The next page is the loan improvement funds. Right now with projects that are budgeted, it's coming to an end at the twenty twenty three. But in the future, unless we have a skate park or some of these items that are on um the board behind us, those, if we have uh funding available, those will come into that moment improvement fund. Then we have our ARPA fund on the next page. As many of you have heard, the city received twenty million seven hundred and eighty three thousand dollars from the ARPA fund. And if you take a look at twenty twenty six, our plan is in the red. And we will have spent all of those funds. So we're going to go down through the ARPA fund as part of today. It's very, very real, I think, if you show where it's at. So we're on target. We're actually hoping to have most of the money spent by the end of twenty five. In the next page, this is kind of a presentation. I'm not going to go through it because Eric's going to touch upon it. These are tentative projects for the parks department. So please turn to the next page. This is a cash flow on parks and as part of our fund balance of the um, we try to keep the minimum fund balance in parks between twenty and twenty five percent. That is operating fund balance as a percentage of total annual expenditures. And if we look at the bottom line, um, we have about forty one thousand at the end of twenty six over the twenty five percent. So we are right on target. For those of you that weren't here a couple of years ago, we were struggling clear below ten percent. And the existing, some of you, the existing mayor and council made a huge effort and a very high priority to focus on parks fund, get those fund balances back in order as well as funding projects. So everything that was implemented is working. And the park board is doing a great job with Eric. The next one is all Tony's funds. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but um in the enterprise funds, instead of looking at the normal cash balances, we like to look at cash flow. Because there's appreciation, there's so many types of things that come in those enterprise funds. We have a fund balance policy that we try to keep net available cash reserves as a percentage of annual operating between twenty five and thirty percent. So it's a little bit higher than the governmental funds. And um, if you take a look there in the last column of twenty six, if you take a look, the line below the double yellow bars, you'll see we're ending at twenty eight percent. That is only happening because we have adopted tentatively fee increases. If you take a look at the very top line, fee increases in twenty five for seven percent and another one percent in twenty six. And we're going to talk about that a lot more um during the operating budget, but it was in that table that we showed you last night on fee increases. Um, the last increase in water prior to the year twenty twenty five projected was clear back in two thousand and fourteen. And as we head into the operating, that's one of the items we're going to talk about. What can we do to keep pace so that we don't suddenly have to up it seven or eight or nine percent? If we can incrementally just up it a little bit every year, if our personnel and operating or capital expenses are going up, then it's not as big as the shock um ours is. The other thing, just very briefly, and we're going to talk about this um in depth. Um, it appears that we are going to be getting some outstanding is the only word to say, money through the state revolving loan fund. Through the tune of about three million dollars each of at least two years within this three year period. And it is a zero interest loan and you don't have to be paid back for thirty years. So we are very hopeful that those funds will be available and it is my understanding it will be for lead abasement, which is one of the top priorities that I'm hopeful. So that's a total of six millions. Nobody's done, well, well, I can't see.
It is whatever the council desires, going on into into perpetuity. Until we have the uh the lines.
Okay, but I thought you said it was three million a year? It's three million in our cash flows. We have it shown three million in twenty five, three million again in twenty six. Then if you drop the line, you'll see that negative one hundred thousand below it. We have to make, the payment is only a hundred thousand dollars a year for thirty years. And so then
For the push through water. That's an extra second.
Yep, then you double it, two hundred thousand that next year. Yeah, I mean, it'll be one hundred plus another one hundred. So something to think about, we'll be addressing that during the operating as well as we'll be showing it on the project list. It's built into the program. And then we'll take a look at W P C. Kind of the same type of thing. The last rate increase we had for W P C, which is our sewer fund, was back in two thousand and eighteen, six years ago. And again, this fund also has not been keeping pace. And so if you look at the very top line, the council um last year during the budget adopted a tentative plan for fee increases of nine percent in twenty four, another nine percent in twenty five and two percent in twenty six, kind of ongoing to try to keep pace. And again, the primary reason for that is um to fund south slope construction as well as putting away money for the future payment on all of E P A loans. When we get to the point, we'll go ahead.
So just to clarify, uh Carol saying that the council adopted the students, the staff presented a plan, a financial plan, which was which was approved by city council. The those rate increases that Carol's referencing for water and for W P C are not catalyzed. They have not been identified at the moment.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we have those percentages in there to meet the need, but if the council were to change those in any way, it would impact the following years. That's what I recall. So we sort of dealt with one year and then we had to remember that that's going to impact whatever happens in the next year. As a viability of our
While while we're on the um, do we have any indications that those rate increases are going to be issued to the means they were sent to help address? We haven't, once we get into our operating project, we'll, that's all about that in the that was one of the concerns. We don't need that much, but we need more. I mean, that was what we over catalyzed here, right? You know, the plans on the budget line.
With the project money that we have allocated in this budget as well as the anticipated construction costs of council, that's going to stand plain for rate increases per fine, but we need to overlay the operating budget on top of it. Yep. So if you take a look at that cash flow, you'll see it's at a hundred and twenty seven percent or nine million dollars the end of twenty six. Again, that is in in progress of construction of loans that we're receiving as well as we're trying to build up reserve so that we can pay for the future principal and interest on those E P A loans, four point two million annually. And on top of that, not to get too deep, but when you issue debt, you have to have a coverage ratio. And so it depends on the loan, but it ranges anywhere between a hundred and ten percent to a hundred and twenty five percent of revenues over operating and debt service payments. So you have to have very sufficient revenue in order to qualify for the And in the next one, I think it's almost the last, um, is our stormwater fund. Again, following the same talking points, the last time we increased rates in stormwater was back in two thousand and five. So that's about eighteen years ago, Tony, is that right?
Prior to this year. We adopted an increase
Yes.
Beginning of two thousand and
And basically, the last couple of years, we have had had very limited dollars available for projects. And so again, during the budget process last year, the council had adopted a rate increase of thirty percent that was effective January one of twenty three. Sounds like a huge amount, but again, if you refer to that chart we showed you last time, last night, it's really, it's dollars. I mean, it's not like hundreds, it's literally dollars. And it does make a difference because if you look down on capital improvement projects, it's a line kind of towards the middle. In twenty two, we only did seventy seven thousand. And then we're going to start doing in the million dollar ranges and then backing down to a level amount of between seven ninety five and seven hundred annual. So those fee increases will make a difference and those projects could be for council to decide what projects you want done, but and Tony's group is very excited about having this project. Again, always the cash flows not well, but look at that green line back in um twenty four with the projects that were on the board as adopted, we were getting as low as five point eight percent of our reserves. And so when we did these fee increases that are needed, then we're back getting close to the range. Again, we want to be twenty five to thirty, but we're getting in the safe zone there by twenty six. And then lastly, and I'm going to wrap um, David's here talking. This is the chart. This is just showing a little bit, a visual here of how much money we have spent on our total C I P. This chart here does not include federal grants and state rebuild. So if you look at two thousand and twenty two, we spent fourteen million nine hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Then for twenty three, we have carryover money. And it is large projects were not able to be done, um, various reasons of projects being postponed, we can't get contractors and whatnot. David can speak to that. But twenty three amended, we're jumping up to twenty five million with all of that carryover and projects. And David will walk you through that. The biggest breadth is in the C I P. If you match the colors up, the orange is the C I P and M F T, those are the projects with the over name. But if you look at the last three years, you can kind of see where that's leveling off. It's very level. The purple, the purple bars there in the last three years is our ARPA. So you'll start seeing that dwindle down and if you were to exclude that purple portion of the bar, it's almost level. So going forward, there won't be a lot of increased revenue unless we consider another source. And then the last page, just to take a peek at, it's the amount of federal number in. Like I say, David took a great job and Tony's being federal grant. That's the big yellow bar and then you can kind of see how it fluctuates. And the biggest thing too that I'm going to say, we are really going to miss that ARPA money. Yeah, so it'll it'll change that, but it's been wonderful. We've got a lot of great projects being done. So with that, I'm going to hand it off. Next.
Yes, that's that's me. I've got uh well four or so slides, some slides were both your own. Uh, Carol already went over the the budget revenues and where the funds come for our projects and sales tax, M F T, utility tax, federally. Our budget is primarily broken down between maintenance versus the capital projects. Maintenance is pavement, our teams are needed here to do annually joint sealing, asphalt overlays, inlet replacements for storm, uh, safety, uh, safety money initiatives and their patching program. For the dollar a month, we spend about B A M N. Capital categories, there's a reconstruction, resurfacing, like fed projects, sidewalk even cells, uh, moving parks sidewalks, for example, utility projects for Tony's group, silver linings, and special projects like their small, personal bridge deck by its own nineteenth street, uh, side path. And then our transfer to parks being three hundred thousand dollars. Can we get through the C G without pointing that out for a bit? So we, we try to select our projects consistent with that council goals. Uh, we, we look at the pavement condition using the pavement condition index. Uh, we consider the state of the underground infrastructure with Tony's people, gauge the need to modernize some of our infrastructure, our traffic signals. We have traffic signal controllers. These are the computers that run your signalized intersections that are over thirty years old. That's like trying to run Windows ninety five. Like sauce. Exactly. That's how old these are. And we need to replace those. We look at functional class of the street, which is a a proxy for traffic volume. Uh, so we're servicing the highest number of users as possible. And then we'll look at uh federal and state funding available. Those types of projects are generally constrained to our collector and arterial streets. And uh, and they come with lots of paperwork and groups for us to jump, for example, uh nineteenth avenue and seventh avenue resurfacing reconstruction. Uh, the pavement condition index, I wanted to touch on that so because some of the others I knew here, it's an objective measurement of pavement condition that the Army Corps of Engineers developed for the Defense Department in nineteen seventies to give the federal government a objective measurement to rate their airfield pavements. It was expanded to improve uh streets and highways over the years and it looks at all the types of pavement distresses that we engineers love to classify everything into from gravel, bleeding, patching, alligator cracking, itch cracking, uh, those types of things. We hired a firm from uh far southwest to come through and do a pavement condition report for us. They completed that this fall. Uh, again, they reviewed two hundred thirty five several fine miles of streets. They drove those streets with that little van there with the sensors and telemetry on it that looked at the pavement and they rated all of our streets and placed them into those uh six categories there or seven. And everything from excellent to very poor. And this is kind of what the the machine sees and tries to quantify level of distresses in pavements. Some of these are cracks that are, you know, a a human eye is not going to see from the driver's seat driving down the street at standard speeds. And so uh the average pavement condition index for Malina is sixty two. Uh, forty percent of the system is, so that's forty percent of the system is in very good text one condition. The backlog is a percentage of streets that are poor to very poor or P C I of forty or less. Our streets are sixteen, our backlog is sixteen percent. It's, it's not the worst that uh we did, I did a quick search on the internet to see how we compared other cities in Illinois and we weren't the worst, but we're, we're not the best. So we're, we're not doing as bad as others, but you can always do better. So if you kind of break down that table there, we look at those colors there from very good, you can see that our asphalt streets are the ones that we're struggling the most to contend with. And our residential streets are, are in the marginal category there. Uh, and alleys also are very poor and given the alleys are very low volume, but uh, still important uh facilities for the city. Uh, we maintain over a hundred and forty miles of concrete street and about ninety five miles of asphalt. So this is just a map that shows the concrete versus asphalt streets. You can see that our, our concrete streets, a lot of them are the higher order collector and arterial streets that kind of operate like your uh arterial system went into your body where your catheters carry blood to your cells and to the organ, then move, move the let you the system to higher levels. The ultimate result was a citywide pavement condition, which they provided, and this is just a graphical representation of all those streets. Uh, you should all have copies of that. If not, we can get that for you. So we use that to select projects uh as a tool. Before we started getting into twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, we wanted to touch on additional funds that Carol said we had available in twenty three. So we're able to increase the asphalt maintenance. Uh, month of money filed into that program by six hundred seventy five thousand or pavement patching to the tune of a million additional dollars. Uh, we're able to update our traffic signal controllers uh and replace some of that thirty year infrastructure. We also have signal detection equipment. The controller is just one part of a and signalized intersection. Signal detection equipment is video systems that the intersections use. And then we have a retaining wall at John Deere Parkway in seventieth street that is failing, that uh had been brought forward that we need to address and stabilize it. And we, we go through those real quickly. So with our twenty three projects with additional funding, we outlined some additional streets here that we could pick up with uh resurfacing this year. Uh, this is, I can't read the fifty second avenue.
Fifty second avenue.
Uh, on the south side there, it's a street that uh we can, we can tackle. Uh, here's some streets off of twelfth avenue, fortieth street and thirty ninth there to the south. Uh, some alley work here just south of River Drive. Over by the uh Coffee House, there thirty eighth to thirty fourth street. Now where streets that need to be uh treated. Uh, the video detection system, that's basically the small inset picture to the right there. That's the video camera that you may see at signalized intersections. And this is what that machine is seeing. And this is what the operators can see when we plug into the intersection. Those are detection zones. Those detect the vehicles and bicyclists approaching an intersection and placing a demand or a call for service. The machine responds to that. This is that machine that does it. This is the thirty year old computers that you have in your intersections out there today. Cabinet is on the left is where it's sited. This picture in the middle is what it looks like inside. And it's not a squirrel and a little wheel that runs it. They're pretty technical computers and that's the controller there that provides all the uh conflict monitoring checking so that we are not providing green and opposing phases, which is problematic because our goal is to separate people in space and time at traffic signals. So we have devices in there that prevent that. Here's the retaining wall at John Deere Parkway in seventieth street, the aerial photo. It's just north of John Deere Road. And that uh arrow is where the wall is. It's holding back those uh the slope of that hill up to those homes there. And this is some shoulders from down below there. This is some of the thickest steel that the consultants we have spoken with had seen for a retaining wall. And it is being rolled over or deformed by the fat shale, fat clay that is on that hill. And you can actually see some of the dead vegetation up the hill because the trees roots aren't able to survive because of the shear. So we want to uh get some geotechnical engineers in here and figure out a project to rebuild that wall so that we'll withstand that that stress. We also want to get up that slope and try to waterproof some of that to prevent water from getting down in there and lubricating the friction lane. So here are our twenty four projects. This is based on the funding levels that Carol says we have. So we went through and we identified projects. We generally like to get two to three projects in the alleys. Uh, and we, we picked those. Uh, some of these projects are like resurfacing that have federal funds. This is a laser Usually they work on TV screens. Uh, nineteenth avenue recons- resurfacing, that's a federally funded project. Uh, thirty fourth street from fourth avenue to the railroad tracks, that's a federally funded project that we will tackle. It also provide a side path for uh bicyclists and pedestrians to get down to the, the river path. Morgan Park, uh, phase one. This is something on the river trail, uh, project in there. And uh, and then down to the miscellaneous section, avenue with the city and forty first street is a signal improvement. Uh, that's why we need pedestrian accommodations that we've had a, a call from a number of people for the Arsenal Bridge Deck Engineering and the pet ramp down there. River Drive improvements at twelfth at the Byron Arena uh for traffic signal there. River Drive improvements at Twelfth at the Byron Arena uh for traffic signal there. Uh we also have a parking ramp structural review for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We want to review the parking facilities. I understand we have some uh concrete that has come down from some of the ceilings. So we need to review that to see what is delaminating and what we need to do to to stabilize all that to make sure that our ramps are safe. Uh we got a fiber optic communication installation for traffic signals. Just off of John Deere Road, we did that a number of years ago. Previous electrician decided he wanted to use copper. Instead of fiber optic, which was a mistake. Uh and we need to get that replaced that we can have the higher bandwidth of that. We also had the City Hall lot reconstruction in there that's that very badly. Um disjointed parking lot next door to us and worry about this trip has been there. So here are the twenty-four projects mapped. It kind of gives you an idea of trying to. To spread the projects out across the city at the same time looking at at me. Southern half of the city as well. Thirty-sixth Avenue is a cycling project that we had planned to do uh this year. One of these years in the state uh delayed us on that. Uh because they needed to review it by their structural people because it involves the culvert. So that's the type of delays we get from. From the state. Our twenty-twenty-five projects, we pick up uh one alley between fifth and sixth and first and second. We catch the next segment of nineteenth Avenue, this time from Seventh to Sixteenth Street, which will be a a very good project. That streets in difficult condition. It's a minor arterial uh important street. Seventh Avenue Reconstruction is in poor shape. We'd like to tackle that from fifteenth to eighteenth Street. The Mississippi River Path Phase Two, we call it that because we can't call it the River to River Path anymore. And we have the Safe Roots to School, Safe Roots to School project around Lincoln Irving. And then uh in the miscellaneous projects, uh we have the construction of the Arsenal Bridge, assuming that we are able to secure a. Department of Defense Community Infrastructure Project from the feds. Eleven point one million dollar project and in a small downtown streetlight maintenance project to replace some aging. Streetlights that we'd like to to tackle. And this is our twenty-five projects that trying to give you an idea, not very many of them, but it's it's what it is. Twenty-six projects, we pick up three very poor alleys on one fifty, one forty thousand range. Resurfacing street to of Fourth Street from fifth to thirteen. Eleventh Avenue C is the street we need to tackle because of failing utilities. Utilities are estimated at five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that project. Twenty-seven, twenty-seventh Avenue A, Thirtieth Street. It's a new project that's in old Oakwood. It's a concrete street in what had been a golf course at one time until seventy-four. I seventy-four went through, some poor subgrade in there and the the concrete is is failing pretty poorly in there. We also have required some construction in twenty-six. And that's largely because FRA told us that they won't even pick applications out for review. For eighteen months, once it's submitted. So a year and a half for the FRA to review clients. And these are those projects there. And here's old Oakwood down there and kind of left. Notch of seventy-four. And Parks Department.
Do you want any questions now?
And you guys can go through the presentations and then pick them up for me. Hopefully we'll forget. Yeah, that's what that's why I hope.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So uh so twenty-twenty-three, as you can see, we've got a long list of projects that are currently going on. Now included on this are, we are continuing to install uh the water fountain bottle fill stations that were approved last year. And we have two tip uh projects at D W S Park. So we've got a longer, longer list of projects that we are. Working on, the largest one being the swimming pool and the parking in the roads surrounding the swimming pool. Uh twenty-four, I just want to say twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh so twenty-four and twenty-five have been approved in the three-year budget. Um twenty-six, the park board has not yet seen it. Um and I also want to say that we are currently updating the master plan for Parks and Rec. So some of these projects could be shifted around or changed over time based on what that master plan is. We kicked off about three weeks ago. Um we're going to be doing some pop-up park events um this summer. And then we're actually going to be pushing out a community survey by asking everyone to share that uh starting next week. For probably about a month and uh yeah, so that's pretty exciting. So as you can see, um the requests and the recommended um prices are a little bit different. Uh what we're trying to look at is upgrading, you know, anything that's wood in our parks to metals. Also trying to help um update or give assistance to some of the facilities that the city owned. But are leased out to other organizations like the Music Guild, like Little League, like the soccer groups and stuff. Something that's never been in the past, but those are our facilities at the end of the day. And if they continue to push off maintenance like they've had, they want to try to provide. Uh some type of assistance. In twenty-twenty-three, we are helping um Music Guild with re-roving their uh their run. Um they've already done several hundred thousand dollars for local upgrades in the past year with updating their. Uh accessibility to their stage and also their restroom facilities as well. So as you can see, um not going to go through, you know, line by line, but there are uh a handful of projects in each year. That either myself or previous director or uh park board members have, but. Yeah, so that's something that we need to look at. And so that's what we come out to about, you know, six hundred twenty-five to six hundred fifty thousand. Twenty-four, twenty-five, and uh twenty-six. Like I said, I'm assuming twenty-five or twenty-six will change quite a bit based off of our master plan. Some of, yeah, so some of the um projects that are also on that marker board, I just want to give kind of a heads up and a little bit more insight to. So Green Valley Softball Complex, um we struggle especially in the springtime to attract tournaments in April and May. Due to uh being a blood, so uh blood. And uh one of the things that we're looking at is turfing the infield of the of the softball. So on the picture on the left is actually a baseball field, but I just does show that the first part is turf and then the outside is. It's grass. And then uh the second picture, half the complex is all turf and then the other half is half turf. What we um are working with MSA Professional Services, they're updating our master plan. They also help write Ocelot Grants, um that are six hundred thousand dollars. It's the biggest um grant um. For Parks Recreation in the state of Illinois. So um we're going to be working on a grant for twenty-twenty-four. But the cost that we're seeing is about one point six million dollars and uh even without that grant. Um we believe with saving maintenance costs for seasonal staff. So right now we have some full-timers out there and then a mixture of seasonal staff. We spend anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on seasonal staff out there. If we were to turf the infield, we could essentially eliminate maintenance staff out there for seasonals. And just run it with the full timers that we currently have. So there's a savings there and the amount of uh tournaments that we could have in April. And the concessions, like we had a tournament, um one of our, I think it was the second tournament that we had this year. We brought in sixteen grand just concessions. So if you're able to host like three years, we posted two tournaments of people. So if you could host something that, you know, just brings in five to ten thousand, you're talking about quite a bit of added revenue. And so what I'd like to propose is paying for it, similar to how we pay for the muscular lights out there. The city fronted um the full amount the first year. And then each year, the Parks Department made a payment to pay that back over a certain amount of time. This turf can last anywhere from ten to fifteen years if done right. Uh we talked about maintenance with them. Uh and uh our biggest challenge right now is making sure that it will work if the front quad floods. Chief Galt sent me a picture this past spring from two thousand thirteen or fourteen and you could go fishing in the front quad. It was from two thousand fourteen, so uh that's something that we're working through right now. This would make, this would continue to make Moline and Green Valley Sports Complex relevant. What we do to track people to Moline. Last year alone, we had eleven thousand hotel rooms come through. We're not, we're not competing against the eighteen-day cross team. But we want to continue to track those local, regional and national tournaments uh to complain. Talk to the school district a little bit. Um you know, back in the day, Western used to host college tournaments, like University Notre Dame came down. Western Illinois. So just trying to um make um Green Key, Green Valley competitive. And we struggle with seasonal staff. We're very fortunate. We've got people out there so far this year. Uh but that could change in a day. They show up or or whatnot. And we continue to get more and more each year. And paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money where this could benefit us more in the long run. And if the weather's nice, we'd love to host a kickball tournament in February or March or softball tournament of our own and whatnot. So. That's the first project. Uh the Riverside Tennis Courts, you guys received a memo about this uh probably about a month or so ago. Obviously, new concrete or new asphalt courts are very expensive. Uh we started researching a little bit more into. Um some other different solutions for consideration. Obviously, a hundred fifty thousand to resurface is just filling in the cracks and repainting. That's a five to seven year ban there. Uh picture on the left is a rubberized surface, uh where they actually come in, fix the cracks, put a rubberized surface on the top of it. And they paint it. You still paint it every five to seven years, but there's a twenty-year life cycle on the rubberized surface. Better on your knees. A little bit slower in play. Uh the downfall with this is this would essentially eliminate any pickleball turn. Massive pickleball tournaments out there because the ball will not bounce on this rubberized surface. And then the lot, the picture on the right side is you can kind of see, you can see that it's an actual tile. Uh this is a sport court um tile. I don't have a price for that yet because this kind of just came up in the last couple of weeks. Uh it's made for indoor, outdoor. We actually had some uh at a rec center I used to be in charge of for indoor. And uh this core surface would work for both tennis and pickleball. And it's actually the module system of pickleball, uh USA Pickleball. I don't have a price on that, but speaking with that, it is a little bit more expensive than the rubberized surface. It doesn't have as long of a warranty, but the life cycle of it is actually, so warranties fifteen years, twenty to twenty-five years or longer. And then saying that uh the rubberized surface is a twenty-year. Nice thing about the sport tiles, you don't have to paint it. So you really don't have, after you put that down, might cost a couple hundred thousand more. You're not going to have to replace it or repaint it over the life cycle. And right now, it's about fifty thousand to repaint. And it's only going up. And then last, um is the I seventy-four skatepark pump track. Uh these pictures are actually from our last meeting that we had. Uh last Thursday, thanks to the other person uh Benj for coming out. Uh we had a smaller group, but overall. They went through a PowerPoint, went through two different designs, uh which is the picture on the left and then the picture on the right. And then kind of gave an overall what it could look like. Uh a restroom and parking lot and whatnot. Um I will share that typically when they do public surveys, New Line Skate Park does public surveys. They get between thirty and a hundred responses and that's pretty typical for them. They said some of the largest cities that they do. Um much, much larger than us, gets about three hundred responses and we've received two hundred and sixty-five. So they were, it had been a very long time, they said, since they've received uh a response in the first survey. So we're really pushing that out there and hopefully we can get another good response as well. I've got on there uh to be determined. Uh we'll talk about uh the market board, but you know. Back almost two years ago, when this was kind of proposed by you and I, um we were talking about about one point five million. Uh the New Line Skate Parks, every month it goes on in the construction industry. Is a price is going up by one percent. Uh so right now they're estimating it about two million. Uh they're also talking about, you know, there's possibility of doing phases and so on. And if you look a little bit closer, you can kind of see a phase one, phase two. You know, taking on what what the citizens true want. Is that a pump track right away or is that getting the skatepark and then working towards. Phase two as well. Uh so we'll have a couple more weeks of the survey and then we'll get together with them and kind of keep working. They've been in contact with uh I GOT for this and we're hoping to bring something back um late summer with the fall. What I have. Okay, so your water distribution system is comprised of two hundred and thirty-seven miles of. Items that are all buried under the city streets. And uh unlike David and Eric, the most of this, the items that I'm going to present to you, you can't see. They're all wandered around, but kind of invisible to us. So. Take my word that um is there. It is there and uh it is. Remember I told you, I have told you previously that, you know, our job and the utilities is to ensure that. When you open up deposits, something comes out and that when uh it comes out, it disappears. So uh the uh the last item there on the twenty-twenty-four list is the Seventh Street Tank Coating. That's the first thing that I'm going to talk to you about today that you can actually see. Uh so the Seventh Street Tank, it was built, it's a half million gallon spherical tank. It was right at Stevens Park there. Uh it was built in two thousand and two and typically with any tanks in the industry, it happens every twenty years. It's super coating. We're gonna, we've got it slated for twenty-twenty-four. We're in the process of designing that process now. The nice thing about that tank is that it looks really shiny because back in when that tank was built, uh clear coats were common. And they since have not um had as much success with those, so there will be some loss to the new. Paint system on that tank, but um it may not have the same muster as what's in it now. Uh if, not that we're opening this uproar of requests, but the the uh the Moline logo that's on that tank is a lot letter blue. Uh if you have ideas, send them to Bob and uh he'll.
There already was one idea, sports books.
The new town were public art?
Okay. Can we get a sponsorship?
That's that's been uh that had actually been done in that new closet.
Byron, like, yeah, Water Tower. At Old Town.
Maybe maybe put a John Deere logo on it.
Yeah, you can see that.
Should we explore that?
Yeah. The the two projects on the top of the list should be going around your G because David talked to you about those. Those are street projects and. And unfortunately, the infrastructure for water and sewers are poor underneath that um those sections of roadway also, so. Got plenty committed to that. Uh the trenchless enlining, that's a common theme in the water distribution system, CIP. And that is because we have, in certain areas of the the community, we have this discoloration due to ca- post-World War II cast iron. And this doesn't have a lining on the inside of the pipe. So the uh the the iron particulate on the inside of that has has flaked off. These dead-end veins and it's uh it's perfectly safe to consume. It doesn't look aesthetically pleasing. But um at the very end of those dead ends, we have customers that see discoloration in the water. So we've been. Uh slowly tripping away and replacing and relining those locations to do with that problem. Fortunately, uh those locations are also locations where we have trouble with your seasonal water gate breaks. Because it's post-World War II cast iron. Um let's see. So then uh David likes, I noticed he's sprinkled in a lot of acronyms in his presentation. Um, let's see, so then, uh, David likes, I noticed he's sprinkled in a lot of acronyms in his presentation, so.
Let service line replacement.
L S F, L R is let service line replacement, and uh, and so in twenty twenty four, we submitted a request, thanks to the prompting of Mayor Wright Buddy. To uh, all, to uh, Congressman Eric Sorensen for, uh, community funding. For a half million dollars for let, uh, let service line replacement, so this a hundred thousand represents the match that if we are successful in getting that. Uh, so then in twenty twenty five, we're going to continue on with the let service line replacements. But we are in the queue to uh, be in line for. Uh, the state revolving loan funds, so they've just recently, they're actually in the process of changing. The, the state legislation regarding the loan funding for let service lines, they've, they've uh, moved from. Move the uh, the period out to thirty years, as Carol mentioned. That uh, is likely to change for all programs, not just let service lines, and then uh, for this request we're going to make in twenty twenty five. There's a, a good possibility, based on our census tracts and the median household income, that we may get some. Uh, principal forgiveness in that also. So uh, they, this is all possible because the uh, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Created an infusion of cash into the state of Illinois, with a tune of about a hundred eight million dollars. And then uh, there was also a recent, um. Change at the regional level that, that changed the formula by which they are distributing that money to the states. And Illinois is going to get a greater share of that money, so I think it increased to like one hundred thirty-six million dollars a year for the next four years. So we're just trying to get our shares, and uh, so as I mentioned previously, we're going to request three million in twenty twenty five. This will all come before you, and you'll have to approve it, it will be the audiences to approve the uh, the loan, and then. We uh, intend to make a recommendation to do the same in twenty twenty six, also, potentially the same in twenty seven and twenty eight. It's zero percent interest, very, very cheap money. Um, so then we're going to work again on those uh, uh, discholoring water locations. And then, um, then in red, there you see the let service line replacement loan payment proposed. And then we'll again seek out another loan for let service line replacements. Uh, absent from this list, that was also shown on David's list back at the Eleventh Avenue C location. We do intend to replace the water main and service lines at that location, Eleventh Avenue C, thirty-three hundred block issue. So that's good news, yeah. So uh, sanitary sewers, so the number one challenge in sanitary sewers is uh. It's, it's not leakage out of the sanitary sewers, but leakage in, so it's called infiltration and inflows and infiltration. So we uh, we have a difficult time in wet weather, when rainwater infiltrates into the sanitary sewer system. The, the system that conveys the wastewater to our treatment plants is not designed to convey all the rain to the treatment plants. It's, it's designed to convey wastewater, so that the system is overwhelmed in wet weather. Because of old, uh, and leaking pipes and uh, improper connections at the homes that. Some pumps and such. Uh, so our intent is to try and uh, work, work toward eliminating those overflows that are induced by wet weather. So at the top of my list in twenty twenty four is also the same two locations that, um, that David mentioned, Forty-Eighth Street and also Thirty-Fourth Street. We're working to do our first uh, project of manhole lining this year, I'm not sure that it's up for bid yet, but it will be. Uh, we've just recently received bids for sewer lining this year, we intend to continue to do that. Continue to do that, sewer main lining is a, is a, uh, or uh. An expensive way to um, seal off the pipe rather than digging it up and replacing it, if the uh. Lining of the pipe, um, only includes that pipe that's out under the, the middle of the street, it doesn't necessarily include the. The laterals that branch off to the homes. They are coming out with new technology, and we're working to try and include that in our bid specs. Uh, we obviously, if we did that, we'd not get as much bang for the buck as many feet per, per dollar. Uh, and then uh, in twenty twenty three, this year, we're completing a bypass sewer project down by. The Butterworth Elementary School that is intended to alleviate um, overflows on the south side of town. And so in twenty twenty four, we intend to initiate a project on the north side of town in Long River Drive that um. Will replace segments of pipe downstream of our Thirty-Ninth Street Bus Station. That um, was intended to improve or increase our convenience capability. Twenty twenty five, we're continuing, continuing on with uh, the River Drive Interceptor Project. As well as the manhole lining and sewer lining, and then in twenty twenty six, the same projects, then in addition to the Eleventh Avenue C location. So your storm sewers, those are, um, you'll see the same two locations that are represented there. We're going to do some storm sewer convenience work, we're also doing, we also line storm sewers as well. Typically, we'll find, we're signing contract, we'll include a greater percentage of sanitary sewers as opposed to storm sewers. Also been an attempt to line for uh, structural integrity, the uh, some, some storm sewer manholes. See there in red, Bob talked to you last week about the uh, the East Gate Tiff. And we've got a mud irrigation project, and I think he did a good job of describing that, that need for you. Uh, also thanks to the uh, prompting of Mayor Wright Buddy, we've got a request in to Senator Duckworth for some uh. Progressionally directed spending, and we're hoping to get that, that because that will uh, be a game changer for, for the host.
I clarify, just so they know, we have been selected by those two professional representatives, or those projects have been selected. It's just a matter of getting it through the federal question. Just saying, because they were obviously being, they need these in each of.
Yeah, it's a, it's a two-step approval process, the, the actual representative has to approve our project and advance it. To the appropriations process and then the S and P. And uh, so then, uh, also next year, we intend that the uh, the city has a number of, um. Uh, car and ship roads, and, and at these star and ship locations, there's little to no drainage in place, and. So it's our intent to try and start um, working toward, uh, developing the ditches or restoring the ditches that are alongside those roads, obviously. We would um, work with our partners in engineering to make sure that um, it's, it's not on a long-term street replacement list, but. We have, uh, we, we get, we, we can complaints and concern the street citizens that honestly the ditch, or the drainage improved. And so, uh, one of those locations is there listed in twenty twenty five at thirty-seven hundred block in Twenty-Eighth Avenue. So that, that would be a specific location, and we intend to do some work there. And then uh, uh, one of the challenges that we have with the stormwater utilities, we have a number of box clovers. Those are the big clovers that go under, remain thoroughfare, and uh, we don't really have a good way of cleaning them. They can delay with um, with sedimentary material, and. We just, they, the sewer cleaning equipment that we have is not, is not made for that. And so we're going to actually pilot something in August and look at some, uh. New way to do that, but um, we're going to, we're putting some money aside for that, specifically the uh, the East Gate Tip. There, one of the challenges that's associated with that, um, the drainage down there is there are two. Clovers that go all the way from the railroad tracks out to the uh, the discharge at the marina. That are partly silted in with material that, every time the river floods, that material comes in. So we just, we need to develop a way to, uh, to maintain that. We have our bulvert that is, um, that discharges the overflow prospect pond that needs to be replaced if you driven on Thirty-Fifth Avenue, you're sure you're familiar with that. Uh, we're going to continue on with manhole lining, uh, there's a drainage issue, uh, however, and I know that you're familiar with. The Long Fifth Avenue, Forty-third to Forty-eighth, the road is constantly wet, and it's a nature icing issue. Uh, in the river. Then another location where um, we need to do some ditch work slash piping work is Twenty-Nine Hundred Block with Seventh Street. And uh, then we're going to do uh, storm sewer lining, and then. Uh, currently, we're actually in the process of doing a stormwater master plan, and so we're holding any twenty-six projects. Pending the findings of that, and obviously when that is completed, we expect the, the master plan to be completed in the third quarter of this year. We'll present those findings to you in that one form. So that should be the last line, that is.
One question, Tony, and what we, what we look at, South Slope Treatment Plant Project, and I. Think about our discussions in past years with the relationships in both East Lane and Coal, Coal Valley in particular. Respect the high and I, obviously, significant high and I issue in Coal Valley. It's, if we're going to build a plant at eighty million dollars, regardless of the fact that they pay for their share of the well. They don't pay for the filtration inflow that happens during major rain events, correct?
That's correct in part, they pay for the water, all the water that is conveyed to us, however. The citizens of Moline paid for the, paid the initial investment in the. The overflow storage capacity that allows us to, to treat that. Otherwise, the, the plant would be overwhelmed, so if you're driving along I seventy-four to the south. And you look over there at South Slope, you see the Big Lethrum sitting right next to the river there. That's the overflow storage that in wet weather fills up, and then. As, after the rain subsides, then we slowly bring that water back into the plant, there is no overflow, uh, overflow discharge for South Slope. We treat everything that comes through, so what Bob's saying is, um.
Do they have a program addressed that high and I being a small bit?
Yeah, and that's a good point, we're working with them, uh, to, to do that, and. One of the first acts that you all, um, you knew as members and those that, um, have been seated. Approved here back in uh, May, was a, was a change to the intergovernmental agreement that. Uh, now allows us to, to issue them a uh, a, a load surcharge, something that didn't exist before. They have approved it, they have allowed it, but it would be something that would be developed based on scientific principles and. And uh, in our investment that we've made, that Molineurs have made in the infrastructure at the treatment plant that allows them to. Overall of system. So uh, so just be aware that that's, that's coming, and uh, and then I think. I don't know if Carol mentioned this or not, but um, part of the um, the rate analysis that was done last fall. The, this body did approve a, um, an increase to both East Lane and to Coal Valley. For the flow that comes in South Slope, uh, so. Based on the rate analysis, there'll be another rate increase going to them again. The flows, you have to quantify it.
I think it's a good point that, that the council asks questions. Pause, but listening to, being allowed to ask.
That's a good question.
How bold for showing, uh, looking at the water at sanitary like twenty-five minutes, you're twenty percent twenty-five minutes. There's not any specific projects certainly there, is that just assuming those will come to light in the need of that high?
And, yep, and assuming that David is going to come forward with, you know, the, the road projects may change and.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I understood, um, what it was that, next I want to talk about let service line replacement. Can we at this time, I know this is a couple of every time, I just get sorry for myself. Can we have an estimate of what our total cost will be, supply?
Well, there are five thousand let service lines, and we expect the cost for each one to be in the ballpark of five thousand to seven thousand dollars each. So it's a really good question, because the uh, the service line is actually broken into two parts. The uh, the part that the city owns is the part that is. Uh, from the connection of the main up to the stop box, which is in the boulevard, golden sidewalk and. And then the parts from that stop box into the house is the property owner's responsibility to maintain. So it's important to note that Moline is the only. Uh, community in the Quad Cities that owns any portion of the service line, or, or the sewer lateral for that. So uh, so kudos to you for, for taking on that responsibility. So, uh, seriously. So, but the part that is, um, after the uh, the, the stop box. The, the, the loan program is going to require us to replace that part, and so. We'll be in, I'll be in front of you at some point in the future to ask how you want to handle that. Do you want to uh, have the property owner pay for that? Do you want us to front the money and get some kind of uh, reimbursement from the property owner, or do you want the city, just the utility? To just, um, serve that?
What would be the cost to the homeowner? Is that part of that five to seven you already quoted, or is that additional?
It would be an additional two or three thousand dollars.
And do we know, are the programs out there already looking at how to support the homeowner side of that, because. I recognize that area responsibility, I also know a lot of people. A lot of places with let service side are going to be places that go up for two, three thousand dollars, that is kind of very difficult, even if it's a low loan. I see there's things you're going to want to think about on that side.
We'll, uh, we'll bring you recommendations, there's a number of communities up in the Chicagoland area, especially that have, that have gotten. Uh, loans already, and uh, and then they have to develop programs.
Certainly, I'll keep my eyes posted for a lot of those programs that come across my news, sure. Right, anyone else with questions for these four centers, yes, because I want to see this?
Yes, uh, this for parks, um, or, I don't know if I missed it, but um, what's your plan for Stevens Park?
Yeah, so that doesn't, the, so the, this is technically CIP funded, so that's out of uh.
Okay, so that's what's, okay. Another question, uh, the Green Valley softball complex, um, uh, I remember having a discussion of, uh. Some of the teams prefer the grass, and that's why they like the complex, i- does it really not matter that much, or do you think?
So we've been talking to the tournament directors, uh, that are hosting tournaments out there, and. They're old school and like playing in the agron and the grass, but totally understand what they're doing. What we're trying to do, and at the end of the day, they would rather have their tournament at Green Valley than to get kicked because. So we've talked to several uh. Tournament directors, we've talked to several, uh, like the, the picture that had the full turf and the half turf, we've spoken to them at Silverdew, Missouri. Uh, and they said it was one of the smartest things that they did, they wanted to turf all of the fields, but it's uh, two hundred thousand compared to about six hundred thousand.
So, um, vote, do you have anything for the?
Yeah, just to follow, so if we do like partially, uh, do you still anticipate not having any uh, seasonal help? Or can it be handled by your full-time staff?
So my plan, um, thanks for bringing that up, I should have said that regardless of if we give the Ozley grant or not, I could still pay for it by the budget reduction. And the anticipated revenue as well, I think we obviously want to apply for the Ozley grant because it's six hundred thousand, I can't almost have the budget, but. Uh, so we have a hundred and thirty-six thousand budgeted for next year for uh, seasonal maintenance. My proposal is to cut a hundred and ten thousand and still keep about twenty-six thousand in there. Uh, and I would rather have uh. Full time, pay some overtime to some of our staff within the city. To know that they're going to be there, because we still have to do garbage, restrooms, uh, switch out bases, uh, pitching mounds and stuff, so we do have. A couple of full-timers currently out there, but we're going to probably need two, two on a Saturday, two on a Sunday, and I would rather spend the extra money. Um, on overtime for our full-timers at twenty-five, twenty-five thousand. Knowing that it's going to go to reliable staff, and that they're actually going to come here, that's our biggest thing is, is uh. That's our biggest thing is is uh the staff that we have out there right now is great, uh but in three years it has not. You know, it kind of just varies. If we just have to mow the outfield and paint uh lines on the outfield frees us up to do some more maintenance things like uh flower beds and something that make, that sets us apart and makes our facility.
Thank you.
Go back to the tennis and pickleball courts. Got many calls of this. Most of them from Davenport. I guess my question is what? I mean, I know in the past we've talked about how great it is to have these pickleball courts and access everybody Quad Cities use them. What do we, what revenue do we realize? I mean, I know that these types, I know pools don't make anything, but how well?
So directly, our department makes very little for renting out the courts. But it's when you bring in, like in the Quad City Pickleball Club did their tournament last year. They had a direct impact of, I think it was ninety three thousand. It's in the amount like I said, ninety three thousand. There's, they are looking at Midwest regional tournaments for USA Pickleball uh for twenty four and beyond. And based off of the information from USA Pickleball and uh and visit Quad Cities, I wish I would have brought that up. Direct impact uh around three hundred to five hundred thousand uh from that one tournament could bring in.
That's direct impact to the Quad Cities as a whole, not strictly to Moline.
Correct, yes. And uh so what we've done in the past and what we've done with our softball tournaments is work with visit Quad Cities and hotels and said, hey, give us your best rate that we can beat out Davenport, Baton Rouge and make sure that they're staying in our hotels. Uh and with them staying in our hotels more likely to eat out in restaurants and stuff instead of running faster. The sport court, since it is a modular system, um over time, if we wanted to you know, change out so many tennis courts into pickleball or pickleball or something like that, it's much easier to take up the tile and uh put up with another color scheme uh for it as well.
It replaces an individual pile of ratings.
Correct. The rubberized surface, uh it's it's great for tennis, but it's only great for tennis. And they're not as popular. The company that did it does our resurfacing, has done about a hundred projects over the years. Where like if you talk to the sport court company, uh Midwest Sport Court, uh they probably do a hundred projects.
I had that rubberized, baby boomers.
Really, it's a boomer sport, I mean.
Yes.
And I feel a lot on parts of that. Have we explored anything related to the skateboard community getting involved in fundraising for the project? Like like the pickleball community did?
Yeah, so we've talked about that at the first meeting just a little bit. And uh right now, no like real discussions on on fundraising, but we did. So we have incorporated uh friends of Moline, Parks and Rec Foundation, and they just had their second. Their first really official meeting, but it's gonna take another three to four months to go through the final process of getting their, you know, status with the federal government. But that will be a way to funnel those fundraising efforts.
So if skateboarding community wouldn't have to create their own, they could literally upgrade and give it to that.
Correct.
Okay, sir.
Yes, okay. With allowing tennis sports and pickleball, I too have spoken, we've had a chat before about um tennis. But I just, uh can you remind me, is Riverside the only tennis? Um well, in Moline, in out of Moline, have we ever like explored like private with partnerships? Like I know that they did over in Mount Island where obviously in the city you have kind of combined, you know, joint forces to.
There was a.
Or are there tennis courts, anything with like why or?
There was a very quick conversation with the school district eighteen months or two years ago because their tennis courts are in uh district here just like ours are. Uh and at that point in time, they could not put any more resources to athletics because they had just built a new gymnasium and they still had schools that didn't have here. So that was not a priority. We're also about a two weeks away from signing a uh design agreement for the solar. No, they, no other discussions have been.
Two questions for Director Brier. Um why are we calling it River to River Court? Cease and desist, are you cease? I haven't heard this, so.
We haven't heard.
Oh, sorry.
You received a cease and desist from.
We received a letter from Southern Illinois from an organization that asked us to cease and desist short of suing actual litigation. They've been around for, I don't know, decades and decades. And and they actually trademarked their name, River to River. And it's a four hundred and twenty mile long trail that that is trademarked with that name. So they suggested that we find a different thing. But like, very polite. I think they were, was it Pia Dome or something?
Maybe.
It was like, you know, where the Superman plays in Metropolis down in that area.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah. So they don't have much down there, but they're protected by stairs.
Well, I got the next question. I know this is on the list here. But with a lot of the CIP projects specifically around resurfacing, if we were to go in-house with the existing project plan, how could that affect budgets? Uh doing more, the the, if my question's not clear, I can.
It's 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 what you were talking about last night.
Yeah.
I see behind you, so I'm, yeah.
Yeah, actually, actually, we're right now exploring that, what cost they now with the equipment. At this point, Barry, I mean, you've been working on that with um Public Works at this point. And we're still looking for equipment costs for new versus used equipment. And staffing, we already have in place. We would just have a a group that would do the paving group. That's all they would do during paving season. And then as they open the plants, they immediately close the plants. That would be their responsibility. And thought being of course is that we're not gonna have a marked up cost for material. This is the most expensive part or for the outside labor. So we end up getting greater distance for less money or more distance for the same.
So we just don't have to actual that or not yet.
We build in the next year's budget.
So it could drastically impact some of these projects.
I think what it is going to do largely is let the crews be more efficient in maintaining the pavements where we have parking lanes, for example, that are are failing. And right now, their only solution is go out there with a box plane and spread it around with the shovel. And and this will let us tackle those narrow spaces, uh restore the pavement, seal the curb and everything from water and hopefully extend a fifteen year life on on that pavement. But right now, it just continues to alligator his sail. We started putting in more ball or collection. It gets wet, water is the devil, corrodes. And that's what.
Sorry, Johnny.
It's it's all chemical.
It's all chemical.
If you could just take through the water.
Along that lines of that question, I was struck, you know, I mentioned last night the CIP map, sorry, PCM map. Corresponds pretty well um in showing the inequities between boards in terms of what's been kept up when you look at the overlay of CIP investment that we asked had to make. Um so first ward has seen the least amount of CIP investment, which sit from twenty ten to twenty twenty. And then I look at these, this map and I noticed you said you're, you know, you're spreading it, that work out. And in my head, I was thinking, could I be focused more on these older wards that have failing roads that are all on there, right? And so I respect how you put it together, but this is a question that came in my mind. And I'm thinking, would the in-house staff be able to get to creating more equity and um fixing the places where that haven't seen as much investment and have failure in progress?
I wouldn't be able to speak for Rod's people, I presume so, but with with respect to the PCI, we see a lot of the green streets, those are just simply newer paintings. This part of the city is old and uh so the the streets reflect that.
Exactly. But if we wanna even that out.
Again, I don't know if that's because city staff were doing everything south of the bridge or not. But if if the council wants to just focus on certain areas, we can certainly look for projects you know, within that that PCI would say is arguably defensible in proceedings.
I think before the budget is finished, right, and all the projects identified, it'd be good to take what Todd has done. And I think there's a little bit more of a deep dive to go with what those, the dollar amounts in the CIP amounts of investments per ward and what they went to. Because that makes a difference, right? You can't just take, take the whole number and say, oh, they need to get enough, right? You need to know what they got, right, as compared to other places. So there's, there could be a deeper dive, but I noticed at least in the twenty four map, there were like three-ish projects on the west side of the city. And and then you even it out on the other parts of the city. So that's, that's fair. But um when you look at historical inequity, that's what I was, I was hoping the PCI would help prove that we could fix. Hopefully, our money would be there, but that's to be continued, I guess.
You didn't have to have multiple of that. You'd have to have one that shows specifically the road.
He's got layers, he's got layers. It's more to be worked on. The link, that's one thing. But the other one, the one with the colors that shows the pie chart of each ward that they got, that's got more layers that I think the kids investigate. So we don't have to. Yes, Mr. Massey.
Uh to add to your point, and if you look at this one, there's, I've already searched one, there's a lot of where it forces that.
I've got the big map in my office I could bring in here.
The first and second one's a bit.
Your Honor, I would argue that anything in our historic neighborhoods have the worst, I mean, that's where all the red is. And it's, it's one, two, four and five, uh all north of the avenue is almost where all the red is. There's a little bit of the third ward, fifth ward up here, but I mean, it's, it's, and it's our most dense neighborhoods as well.
And I do also understand, you're also making these recommendations because of the tie-in to what can be done in utilities. So I get all that. I just didn't want us to forget that there were these other correlations that, you know, if we had that in-house group, could we make a more of an impact on on fixing the equitization? Yes, Mr. Massey.
I don't know. I have an issue of, just let it go a little bit to equity too in in the Parkside. And specifically kind of some conversations around the the state park. Because when we think of skateboarding for any sport that is going to be primarily practiced by younger people, um especially I think we need to go into that with a different expectation with what for pickleball development for how that community gets involved. I think there's definitely an opportunity for evolving and that's how we also know that whether we're gonna spend a lot of money to do something, skate art, soccer fields, baseball diamonds, knowing there is that community is active and contributing in some way, that that is definitely helping us to understand that that's a sustainable opportunity for the city, but that financial is not the home of which. Because the simple demographics of comparing skate art to pickleball fields is gonna create, there's just a very different level of income. So those.
Um any other questions about things we've heard?
I just, I used to live, I used to be the second ward alderman and I know Tenth Street was a new street. It was still reconstructed. So I lived on Tenth Street back, you know, nineteen ninety seven, ninety eight. And those streets are more maintenance because they're older streets, many of them are brick streets. We do have a brick street ordinance which we, I guess, wadded up and threw out the window years ago. That the brick streets would remain brick streets and maintain them, not have them. But you'll find that in that part of town, it it does in many cases, a lot of reconstructs. Just because it's, when they reconstr, when they did anything twenty, well, forty, fifty years ago, it wasn't very good. I mean, when they went in and fixed it, just like an overlay, overlay or overlay. So it will.
So they might not be those kind of roads.
It might not be, just I I I'm gonna.
That's a good point.
The experts. I had a question and it's a stupid question, but I'm here, that's what I'm here to do, a stupid question. The lead, the lead pipe of basins, is there any leeway, how you can, I mean, you can, when you expand uh brick creative with the uses of that money or is it lead pipe and that's it?
It covers the replacement, actually, you can't use, you can't use that money to pay for in-house staff to, you have to pay for contractors. Uh but it does cover the uh the street ash that's associated with any sidewalks or whatever. If anything associated with the engineering process, can you think of?
Okay, that's awesome. So out of the box, if Moline were to change our mind and give ownership of the underwater line from main instead of the property line now all the way to the house, that to the uh resident like other communities do, would that impact how these funds are spent? Or do do we still have to replace that whole money?
So I.
Okay, so it isn't about ownership, it's.
Yes.
No, it's about.
So we have to respond.
Okay, and while the ground's open, why not?
So while we're telling you this, also random and stupid. I'm getting, asking, like, you know, I'm aware that um the city of Chicago is um gonna be getting solar energy from a huge farm in spring, right? So state is getting connected to where there's consumption. I also just read that they are starting to experience a drought in Chicago. Is it crazy out of the box to think about our excess water if we even have any more without endangering how much water we have for us going in tankers or something to farther away communities than just the ones we've already picked up in terms of selling that water?
Haven't.
I told you it was pretty.
That's pretty, that's a pretty water, sort of a water wagon. Water wagon, water wagon.
But I, I mean, obviously, there would be expense for us for equipment that would take.
It develops.
And I don't know what the long range impact of climate changes in Mississippi like we saw last year. Will we see another low here and things like that? I I have no idea. And I don't know where our excess capacity is at at this moment. It's just, again, my job, I feel like, is always connecting to us. And so I saw this situation, I thought, and I wonder if we could take a look.
It's not, it's not that crazy.
Okay, good.
So people from.
So uh answering your question, rest assured, there is no concern for drought with regard to the Mississippi. The intake for your treatment plant is set by two feet below the um the downstream dam. So the whole pool would have to dry up before we have water. And so that's one. And then two, today, we're at, we're producing six million gallons a day, but we're selling a lot of water because it's really dry. That's with the syllabus um lined with us. So treatment plant's rated at twelve million gallons a day. So there's still plenty of concern.
All right, while we're, you know, asking some questions, um along with your idea, um not necessarily taking it out to to Chicago or anything, but I know that, I'm just thinking of my son who lives in Mylar. He came into my house and took a bucket full of my water. I mean, have we thought about like doing buckets like that are uh containers like that and selling it like Jewel or or like Walmart and letting like other people purchase?
I wanna answer this.
Yeah, I'm just.
One of the, one of the crazy ideas I had is that we should bottle our water, we should sell it. And I got attacked by by the anti-plastic.
A lot of times like individual bottle waters.
I don't know.
Face paper, yeah.
Paper bottles.
He didn't like the paper.
All the pressure cast room. So we did uh have an initiative gone, we're the bubblers, these uh devices over here.
Yeah.
And we were actually providing water to some Quad City governmental like Renew Moline and the Tax Letter Center at the time. And then COVID came and we had a iron freeze and basically that.
At that point.
At that point.
We didn't see that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if anyone asked questions, they want to ask about what we presented, so.
Just a, just one last comment to Alderman Timmy's point about the lead discontainment, the lead service. We also didn't use to do alleys. That's a fair old recent. We had more alleys west than the town. Well, on Tenth Street, that was the only way to get into your house is through the alley. And it used to be like a fifty fifty a thing to get everybody that's that, that was on the alley to sign on to pay a certain amount. I think that's what it used to be. Now we, we eat the cost of the whole alley, so.
So do we have research on when that switched?
Probably around two thousand.
Oh, no. It was a, it was special assessment is what they used to do, yeah.
So then these, the alley itself, in terms of right of way of the street, obviously is ours. Is the centerline of the alley leading to the garage actually private property that we're. That's, that's a legal question.
We need to know legal counsel.
They're all, they're all. Are you sure they're right of ways? That they're dedicated? They're not fully easements?
Yeah. Typically. Yes, or typically the edge of the alley is the edge of, the edge of the alley pavement is the edge of the right.
So the garage should sit literally on the edge of the right of way, correct?
Right away goes a lot deeper than people play. Cause I have people say, oh, MetroLink put this box at my yard. Oh, that's incredible.
I know.
Isn't that your yard?
All right.
Sorry.
Beautiful.
Yes, we have more. We have to move to ARPA changes, Carol.
So if you get your, your, your manual out the.
Let me need a microscope.
Behind the numbers that I looked through in the window, but it includes all of these summarized large projects that we just discussed. For everything you want to know in the years, what's on here and hide out. It determines very last page. I just wanna kind of highlight, we're gonna talk about ARPA ordering and operating budget. But just to highlight, I just wanna talk about the luxury of capital, the C I T, the capital projects. So you take a look at the ones highlighted in yellow on the left-hand side, those are the ones I'm gonna talk about. We have a hundred and fifty thousand in the current twenty twenty minute budget for the C I T sidewalk rector. That has not changed. We have added the Arsenal Bridge deck room. And when I say add, I should say we have swapped it out. It had been Seventh Avenue. And in light of the fact that we know we have to spend that ARPA money within a short window after David and Bob, and we felt it was much better to swap that project now. Again, total funding is is basically the same as swap out. I just wanted to know, um, we made that change. Then thirty-sixth Avenue board reconstruction, um, there was a little fragment, thirty-five thousand hanging over in twenty-three, but that project now is completed. We have, oh, I highlighted one stop shop. It's not infrastructure. What's happened is we added in, um, the Arsenal Bridge and some other projects came, uh, final with the twenty-two audit. We dumped the remaining fragments of money into the one-stop shop. That's why I haven't highlighted in green. It had been six hundred thousand. The net now is all in one stop shop, the eight sixty-eight. So you can move that around. I just wanted you to know that that we made that change. And then the other change we made, um, we had had eighty-five thousand down below in the recycling, which is highlighted in green. We flipped that eighty-five thousand up to the one-stop shop because as we look at that TIP number seven project with the recycling, we felt we can wrap that in with the TIP seven project. And three of those ARPA funds for the eighty-five thousand. And again, you have another opportunity. If you feel differently, we can move it, but for now, as placeholders, that's where we're at. So that is the unrestricted money. Then if you look I just wanna make mention, we're in our final year for water. And another million dollars is highlighted on on twenty, uh, project number twenty-four. Um, and then we will have to have discussion on the broadband installation in dark fiber. That is restricted funds, um, primarily used for sewer and water. Our broadband, we're very fortunate that we didn't have anything. So that one million three, it's a placeholder in broadband that we may be bringing, we're trying to see if we can pass over a project for the space carpet um, to use those funds. But um, as we get into the operating, we're gonna be talking more about where we wanna really focus that million three. And other than that, I don't have any other changes in our budget.
That was meant to be phase two, the original.
Right, the star factor.
RFP that we did in dark fiber came in at one point seven million dollars based on what we didn't know before we had entered into bringing the measurements. So we pushed back the dark fiber, looked for alternatives, and that's the least cheapest they can believe. We'll get into that project, let's.
So I have a question about, um, the, there's a hundred and three free left in the childcare program. So that's also eligible to be moved if the, there are no outstanding, um, applications coming in the second round? And does that have to come back to your council then? Because.
Yeah, we want, yeah, we, we would want with, we just kind of include that project. We've spent the hundred and three in twenty-two, so the remainder is three ninety-six. And I think.
Well, some of it's committed. I know we have three hundred, some of it committed.
K J. Yes, yes. And so we, I actually had a K J's out of town. Um, but we're gonna have to do that and we'll bring that back to the council.
I think I have a little bit. I just wanna make sure I'm reading this correctly. The restrictive amount here, seven, almost seven point nine, that is the actual number we're required to be, or we have it like, oh, well, we allocated a little bit extra into the restrictive section.
What we did is we worked, ran through the twenty million, seven eighty-three. Then there was a formula way back when it first started for revenue sharing. How much revenue did you, did our city lose? And there was a formula as you proceed through the years and you've gotten revenue, every, every year we have to calculate um, what revenue have we gained back? And we are still at a loss of this seven million eight going forward with the way they allow you to spend funds. Then that restricted portion is kind of like extra money on top of what you, I'm sorry, I'm saying it backwards. The unrestricted is the revenue um, replacement. This is amount on top of it. So then they put on all these compliance. It's very strong restrictions on how you use it. And primarily we put it towards water and sewer, um, or the broadband. It's a very limited scope.
So it's three categories.
Yeah, very limited.
And I just made sure we didn't, you know, oh, we wanted to put a million into this project, but there was only nine hundred thousand left, so we put extra money in that number. That's what I'm making sure of.
Oh.
But that seven, the seven million eight ninety-three is our actual.
It is, yeah, that that is the net right now, the total, total needs.
It might go up a little bit, but it all depends on.
Yeah.
And I don't keep changing it.
Yeah. Okay, good question. So Brian and Melissa, Timmy.
Uh, just a question on the arsenal we're in. Will we, what's the arsenal's take on this? What are they there, if any? We have to, we have to, I mean, I know it's federal money that we're used to pay for it. But when they, they came over here, what's that?
Their supportings.
Yeah, I know, moral support, right?
Yeah, that's what it's at.
Okay, when they came over here, that that one, I don't know, you guys weren't here, but the.
February or change.
February, they brought all their staff over here to tell us how much they needed it.
Yeah.
We were gonna pay for it.
Right.
And I think they said something about, we'll help you write some grants or, I'm sure none of that ever happened.
Well, that's part of the decent.
Why don't you explain where we're at with.
All right, we have a consultant team that's under contract working on designs for the red. And the best tree and several options for pedestrians, which we have some schematics done. We're going to be meeting with the army shortly. We're going to apply for the D S A grant this spring, but the arsenal asked that we wait a year because they had a project in Rock Island that was shovel-ready. Ours was not shovel-ready at the time. We were doing everything we could to argue that we were going to be shovel-ready, but it was going to be a.
So can you refresh my memory? Shovel-ready just means the engineering's done?
Uh, yeah, you have to have the phase two underway and ready to begin building short quarters and it would have been a difficult task. So we're going to apply next spring, hopefully with construction. That's where we're at with the army and all the consultants in DC think we've got a good project to do. We just have to get our application put together and then we can transfer away our pieces of work out with the army for where the bridge would touch their property. We'll go from there.
Things got slowed up a bit too when they did change in command. So they were, that, that, they moved things back.
Yeah, they have different priorities from the different most in charge.
Yeah.
Uh. Yeah, it's worth us continuing to.
We should.
Pursue.
Well, we have.
No, but I mean, pursuing their financial collaboration.
Correct.
Just.
Part of our strategic plans, collaborate with our neighbors and the ones.
It will be a great project, provide access to the service folks and people work on that one. And they will open it up so that the public has free access to it.
And they're, they're already doing that.
It will be a good connection. It's very well.
I believe the eighty-five thousand for recycling was our share of Rickema.
Yes.
And is that just pretty much dead in the water for the uh, Rickema recycling bins? I, it was allocated in anticipation that maybe other people would.
I think that the, the reason we have, you could be a spirit.
Yeah, no, I mean, at, at this point, that eighty-five thousand is unnecessary where it was allocated based on the. Dating for outcome July or.
Well, I think the reason, reason was that we, we were supposed to get other groups to go with us. We weren't gonna just give eighty-five thousand and none of the other cities contribute to keeping recycling. So that's why it's.
It pre, it preceded negotiations with LRS in the hosting agreement that was set aside initially. And then in the hosting agreement, we were able to negotiate to drop off recycling centers and that granted, which then against this with the fact that we had LRS cost. Then eighty-five was basically three dollars.
There's nothing else? We should move on to what else do you wanna say about ARPA?
Nope, that's, that's it. I'm putting right, we will be keeping the projects and completing budget pressures.
Great point, one million dollars. These are uh, these are.
It's Carol, Carol called me and said, what could you do if I can get you three million dollars more a year?
Get us connected.
You're right. Carol called me and said, what could you do if I can get you three million dollars more a year?
Oh, Carol called it. I said, Carol, I'm like, Carol.
No, Carol. I'm just teasing her. So this is, we, we looked at some additional projects with the increased funds. Uh, and broke it down by those three years. And uh, you know, twenty twenty-four, you've got uh, uh, some additional alley projects. Reconstruction, resurfaces. I have maps following this, but you know, five thousand, just shy of a mile in the first year. Little, little less than a mile in the second. And then uh, a big number of projects in year three, twenty-six. So that's a total of fourteen additional products, about, you know, two point seven miles. And this is, this is uh, what the, you know, we selectively based on. So that PCI, uh, utilities, areas that we have received complaints on. And try to, again, geographically spread the funding around. Thirty-second Avenue is an expensive project. It's a very poor street, but it's got very problematic at the bottom. Uh, facilities down there, picked up a number of streets in Molett. And that was a post-World War Two neighborhood with a lot of uh streets that aren't built to the day standard, and so they wanna get in there and fix those. So it's resurfacing a forty-eighth street. But that's the goal of trying to maintain a street rather than reconstruct it to extend its life. Picked up a number of alleys far east there. Forty-first Street is a street that's in very poor condition over in that neighborhood and some of that industrial area.
So this is like if we were to go to the eighty, the yard road.
If you look at.
It's not included in the financial.
Right, so if you combine that with what is in pass road projects that we just discussed with three million dollars additionally, these would be the projects that uh, total six point four miles over the next three years. Spread generally along this line, including seven, they have a number of streets.
Yes.
How does an alley get precedent over a street? I have two streets that are.
We tried to do bus routes that are. We tried to pick up two alleys here, and some of the alleys are, are, I mean, they're in a very poor category. If, if we want to look at streets more so than alleys, we can, we can do that.
No, it's a question. I just wanna know how to evaluate this.
No.
Such as based on the green eight or.
That, and yeah, there, there are worse streets. Remember the tables that we went through earlier, we generally try to knock off two of them.
The alleys?
Yeah.
Okay, so these are pretty bad, but they can hardly get through.
They're, they're all in rough shape. I mean, I can get you photographs of, of those degrees of.
Well, I tried, I did.
Yeah.
Another pair.
I've tried the.
And you have to die Chicago's.
I know, I've been tired of being hollered at by my wife, it's still had the streets are.
So he works hard.
We're gonna fix it when you leave me alone.
Uh, David, I think uh, I'm pulling off of a two-year-old memory. Are there sections of Molett that were just gravel and we put some blacktop on top of it?
There were, I understand that few years ago, and break me up for a moment, it was a very bad winter and your streets did not fare well. And they kind of literally fell apart. They, the staff went through and did some kind of temporary work to better improve. And that's what a lot of that reflects is trying to get in there to address it. From, I don't know if they literally were built.
Scrapping.
Grabbing.
I mean, could have been, who knows? Developers came doing jinky things.
I think we did.
Okay, then we'll explain.
Um, not everyone was here on accident to watch the laxy things, so I'm gonna dive in again. Or call it. Um, so looking at the, like, the three million dollars that they added on to this project, is this thing just include utilities plus?
Some of them do, yes.
So, and let me ask, if, if they project would include utilities, I, I know utilities do not come on every road project.
That's true, but if, if you look here, I think that you have a table that says utility plus, and then it says funded by project, yes.
I'm sorry, it's right there.
Awesome.
So if, if we were able to find funds, that would free up, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, if not more, to go into the street, the surface and the.
Because you're including it, this would be in it, but it's not included in this total column. But is that expected to be funded from utility? Or that.
Wait, so the cost, the cost column includes the utility.
And you're noticed, there'll be instructions for down there. Yes.
Yeah, that's when you ordered it.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, we've done almost two hours of good thinking.
I guess we're done.
One last section. Of thinking, yes?
Yes.
Completing budget pressures.
Okay, let's talk about completing budget pressures that we are under, have been under, and you know, some new ones and that's some new ones. So, you know, right off the bat, what I wanna do, I wanna try to go through this. It's in some respects a little prioritized, but to be final, I'll prioritize my health. Those you look up on on the board, you know, we start with the police and the fire pension, right? Because as Carol explained last night, it's about a one point four million dollar yet it's managed toward. This is not just a one point four million dollar one time. This will be an annual recurring one point four million dollars that we have to set down for the state. Those would be changes in investments and, you know, actuarial reports to the state. This the outcome. This is where local governments through the decades got themselves in trouble, right? They manage their police pensions, they manage their fire pensions. They look at their actuarial report and then they therefore appropriated enough money to fully fund them because they could not or they chose not to. That's what led to that major pension crisis more than anything else in this state, right? Not the only states, this state in particular, right?
Can you remind us, Carol, how much money we saved by going this route over the light of trying to get to the red spot? Do you remember?
I mean, it was millions of dollars.
I I knew it was like twelve million dollars in savings over the life of the of the bonds.
It's up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So it's just chipped it back a little bit, yeah.
Then hopefully we'll see a change in the markets, we'll see a change in investments and. Change in the actuarial reports, you know, as younger officers come on board and older officers, it changes, it just changes the whole thing. So so that's one of the big ticket items. So that's coming right off the top, you know, and when we told you that we had one point seven million in unexpended fund balance for point two. Which is a great way to end a year. You know, you get three hundred thousand. Seven, three thousand. Not a lot. It takes us takes us then to the general fund additional, the TIF cap, TIF shortfall. This is another one of those places that that we struggle with. Uh, we're expecting another five hundred thirty thousand dollars projected shortfall that we have to meet. So we're at negative two hundred. Right, out of that unexpended.
That just TIF seven or that primarily?
primarily. Combination of of a couple, but TIF is number nine is the biggest burden on us.
TIF nine?
I'm sorry. Number seven.
TIF seven is the biggest burden.
I'm thinking of the nine million, yes.
Yeah, so there's monies there that are owed, paid back, the utility fund, I mean, the bonds that were issued to the utilities. And then there was internal borrowing in the form of brands that also have to be paid back.
That's an additional one point eight million.
On top of the nine point nine.
Yeah.
So we're going in the wrong way with these tests, so you know. I've seen this before and if we don't take care of it, it will just become worse and worse.
And just to refresh people's memory, it's take care of it by getting developed and going or by shutting it down instead of stopping.
In case of seven, all of this debt would be updoable immediately. It would be.
Oh, I see.
Cataclysm. You can't do it. Right, that's one you can't close. There's others like eight and nine that we could consider in solution.
Okay.
Okay.
Is seven, it's on work, done.
Eight is South Park. Nine is one to be in state six, which is where the old horseman school is, which has never done anything since the date it was created. And twenty six thousand, twenty three thousand dollars is a dismal. And then TIF, TIF, uh, seven is by the airport. We call it the Moliney Business Park. They call it the Airport Business Park. So it's the Moliney Business Airport. But, uh, no.
Okay, sorry to.
But no, it's a good time to ask these questions because those things are really big ticket items.
But right now, the general fund is funding, or it will be now in twenty four, nine point nine million dollars to support the TIFs. And it's going to continue to grow to eleven, twelve, to a peak of fourteen projected.
It's kind of like.
And then it goes down.
It's kind of like the Mississippi River rising, taking with it everything that's bad and then going back. And that's what we're facing. So it really is critical that we see projects happen in this, after endless progress. All right, um, Evergreen Classic Cop Study, of course, uh, we presented that to you. We had the consultant meet with you online. You know, that is help hovering out there. That is an issue that has had an impact going back over five years. This was meant to write down problem. There were two different approaches, both, uh, bring everybody to the minimum or or the hybrid model and, uh. That's something we'll have to talk about very much in time on the final final information for our forward. But, um, but that also needs to get addressed somehow. The, uh, L T E, this is what we talked about, the broadband with a whole that we got ice. You know, we started looking at alternatives. She called it a very ridiculous emphasis, very ridiculous out of nature. And he started digging into ways and alternatives. Question is, is will those alternatives, can we still use the restricted arbitrage? Paid for it? Do we still have that money there? That's the question that we're trying to get answered. And as soon as we have that answer, we'll share that with you. But instead of actually running dark fiber that we would light up ourselves, we would own that light up. Through all of the security cameras, through all the intersections of the city, through all the controller boxes, through the traffic control system. You know, this might be a better means by which to do it. That's a goes beyond just traffic controllers and security cameras. It is literally a private network that's up in fire city, as I described it. It's like an umbrella. You know, and we can have countless different uses for it. We're gonna bring that forward at some point with Motorola. We're already working with the company as it is today with the Vigilant. We use a Vigilant system here in the city right now. Those are through Motorola. So she's been working with Motorola for that. So again, that's the ARPO money. We're hoping we can free up that ARPO money specifically for this. Uh, that's one point, up to one point seven billion, but that is zero budget right now. It's just it's just either grant money or art money. Uh, then we just talked about the D C I consultant recommendation that David, uh, nicely covered for an extra two to three million dollars for an extra two point seven miles. You know, so that's what, you know, mayor, that's what we've been looking for and that's that's that number. Uh, earlier, we talked about the rental housing program and trying to get our hands wrapped around the rental housing issues. You know, that's anywhere from five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in S S F in essence. Those are people. Those are actually four inspectors who would be out in the field daily, doing their job, trying to prove these neighborhoods. Bring about change, meaning for change to an area of the city that we really have posed on. We have great ordinances. They will tell you they're great ordinances, they're well-referenced, but we put nobody behind them. So you can't have one person who's been doing it forever, running around, destroying. They care of the big problem. Fire department that was trying to keep up and well, because those inspectors are critical, whether they're high rises, whether they're low rises. In-rise buildings or single-family rental properties. That's what this was meant to do, was to start to curb that problem and reverse that trend. For today, we've got thirty percent change in single-family rental housing, when the norm on average is about twenty. So to bring it back the other way, if we have to actually start forcing the ordinances and suing, give it a licensing program. Or some other tools to, uh, to enhance that. This would provide for personnel as well as vehicles and computers for them to do their work. Uh, the skate park, there is zero budget into that as well at this present time. You know, as as Eric pointed out, that's a two million dollar, and I have one percent of the funds you said. Sorry to call it one percent of the money, but. I'm not consulting, so. So that's the skate park. Uh, the fire station, again, this goes back to seventeen years ago when the decision was made. So the, uh, sixty one thousand square foot police department, fire department got left in the wake of after hijackings. It was a bank that wasn't there. They made a choice. They made a choice to build that police station. It serves the city well, effectively serves a lot of, well, multiple agencies use that building, it's not just us. So the fire station, of course, the big issue there was about an eight million dollar issue related to replacing the physical plant, the boilers, the HVAC systems. It's all crumbling. It's all decayed. It's all old. They custom build parts for it, keep it running. So if it should go down, you know, I got to go Carol somewhere, thirteen, if there's no heat or if that system goes down, we can get it back up and running. You know, you have close station, the rules. And that's a big challenge, but that's years out. That's still a few years out. We've pushed that back a little. Um, there's no, uh, for the IS and for riverfront land improvements, there's about a million dollars currently available for. For the study and for acquisition of parcels. So let's talk about that. You know, Ryan was working through a process very specifically, bringing up all consultants to come in to do the riverfront master plan, right? Though that riverfront master plan is gonna cost anywhere four or five hundred thousand dollars to have a consulting company actually do the plan. That costs the plan out. So it's more than just a plan, like a picture on the wall. It includes all the financials to make it feasible. Similar to what we did with the Spiegel Building with P G A B. Right, we have a feasibility study that tells us the marketability of that project and what would it cost. So that's what we're talking about. There's about a half a million there. We don't know sitting here today what the cost might be for the properties that Illinois Department of Transportation. Is going to present us with short. We know that it's in the works, it's been in the works for over a year. We expect to see a relevant parcel maps, the legal descriptions and instructions for us. Follow the law, we've got ninety days to make a decision. As soon as we hear from them, the clock, the clock starts ticking. We have to decide who we want them to be dealt with. What I understand, and we're gonna push this issue, if it is for public purposes. It should really be at no cost, not in a traditional dollar exchange. But if it's for public purposes, non-public purpose, and we still want to control the property, then we would pay whatever the fair market value is. And something to stay, of course, will not buy this one. So hopefully, everything is not, it's all public purpose, not private. Private property would go back to China here, for example, right? If they donated it originally, probably or undoubtedly would pay. So we're working on that. Uh, there is zero money budget for the future development. So we talked about redeveloping that area. That means demolishing a building, possibly. Leveling the land, building the property up, putting in whatever things we're going to do over there to be determined. You know, that money's not budgeted yet. That money is not in the partner recreation master plan. It probably won't be at this partner recreation, a recreation master plan. Because that's coming out with the shoot faster than we're right behind it. So there's probably gonna be some communication back and forth because there are plants, world, it's face out there. Okay?
Uh, my God, nothing I didn't mention, I would say, along these lines of, um, needing to. Sort of continue to refer back to the U L I report about what could, what we should think exponentially about down there, right? Um, and along and taking into consideration whatever is going to come out of a riverfront master plan. I got involved, um, I have signed up to be a part of the Mayor's Institute for City Design, um, which. I forget where they're anchored out of. They're actually anchored out of the National Dome for the Arts. But, um, it's a very successful program and they will be sending experts from here for Steve's selling Florida. Um, to come up here and and check everything out, similar to how the U L I hosted.
Oh, Tampa, Tampa.
Yeah, so so the institute that I'll I'm going to, which is for small cities, is, um, in Tampa. And they basically kind of, I think they give you both like what you well I did and some recommendations for for what they see and how to get it done. And it's at no cost to us. So I just wanted you to know that that's, I tried to get into the first one I could do, knowing that the. The R F P is out and we're looking at these consults for the riverfront master plan, but that's good. No problem one, and I think actually in a long run, it's gonna work out just fine. So I'll bring all that back.
We should go with you, but I can't. Yeah, enough support. All right, uh. Again, there's no money budget for any demolition, certain properties, so you can go. I have no idea what that may cost. We're gonna find out. So we know. Uh, again, we're back to the cash flow bonding for the future TIFs. Um, you know. Right now, there are two projects and only two projects in the TIFs that are looking for any money from the city. There's no money involved in TIF South. A city dollar is involved or repayment of money from the government in that project. Always, when we look at the J C Penney project, which your new Moliney has been working on for the better part of, I don't know. Eight months, probably about eight months now. Now, they acquired that property, uh, from, uh, the Riverstone group. That included for those who were not on the P M T or not sat in the meetings, is basically a residential redevelopment project for downtown. Market rate apartments, uh, both in the old, any building, uh, on the second floor predominantly and a few additional block apartments on the top floor. Let's say that's one of the two phases. The other one is basically a five-story building. Cities are into J C Penney parking a lot, not for them. The whole five-story building with very limited retail on the bottom and an office for the property manager, actually be physically present. Uh, they are still working towards the investors they need for that, probably a million shy of the market they're trying to get. They're looking for about six million dollars in. So we would have to actually be able to come up with that six million dollars with TIF plus. That's how that would be done. And over time, of course, we will pull that money back out. Make themselves as well. Um, power instruments, we've already talked about three point five million dollars for flood protection. As I pointed out in meeting today, the, um, the F P, project management team. Now, that project will include several things from the city. One is going to include three point five million dollars on water improvement. Their overall project is somewhere between fifteen to eighteen million dollars inside a twenty six million dollar value TIF. All the properties only with four twenty six million. So this is a huge investment, offsetting investment for what's in that flooded area. Uh, it would include vacating the alley that runs between, uh, Hillway ninety two and former second street, which is the rear of the property along the rail line. Uh, it would include us relocating utilities in that particular alley. I don't believe we have a number for that yet. Relocating those and, uh. And that would be, uh, they would be, of course, building their one building to be brand new, tearing down one building, particularly a brand new building. For the manufacturing operation and then a total, uh, redevelopment of their existing building. Uh, I'm not sure what street that is, so we would do that some fifty, thank you. So get it all in there. So anyhow, that would that would take care of that. And then they would be acquiring properties in front of their property, between their property and Hillway ninety two. And that would allow for better movement of their trucks, deliveries, as well as providing greater presence in their, their project on Hillway ninety two. So that's one of the other challenges that we're gonna be facing and coming up very quickly. You'll probably see that in July. Uh, in-house resurfacing, we talked about that, probably two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the equipment if we're gonna do our own in-house resurfacing. That would be purchases and rentals and then asphalt next. Uh, right now, there's zero budget for that, but we're looking at that as being a cost savings and pulling that out of our existing C I. Uh, one of the other things we're looking at doing is this leaving back in pilot program. Uh, the way we're doing is really, really inefficient and yet we do it for months and months and months. And we get injuries and injuries and. So from our standpoint, there's better ways to do things. So we're looking at equipment. Rod's working on this with Barry and I don't know Sarah, perhaps, I would guess. Looking at ways that we can bring in this new equipment, perhaps purchase one vehicle in next year's budget to do it and push back. Another piece of equipment to go later. So that way we're not increasing our cost, but we're simply inserting this in. Don't, it's not fleet free. That's fleet free is a different story. But we would be looking at at putting this in place. It only takes one person to run the truck, one person to run the vaccine. That's how efficient it is. Today, I don't know how many people are on a crew, maybe four. Four or five people on a crew. We had four of these trucks running around with four guys doing that. That would be the other fifteen guys with something else. Right, other work that needs to be done. Right, other work that needs to be done. Yeah, so it's all about cost efficiency, so we're gonna be looking at that, you'll see that coming forward in next year's budget. Facility security upgrades, you know, we've got issues here, we've had issues here probably forever. We need to secure this building. You know, the police department did a study last year, or at least a year ago, maybe twenty years ago. Tell me that, I'm not kidding you. So we know that we have incidents that take place in this building or over at public places, we get irate customers. I mean, believing that everybody walks through city halls happy to be here. You know, they're irate, you know, and then they become threatening, and it becomes problematic for staff. Especially the, you know, the staff at CED. Folks in HR are pretty much, they're locked off, they're locked in, you can't get in there unless you figure throw a chair through the window, right? But at CED, there's nothing to prevent people, just wants it straight in. So we've had a.
We're up here, back to that.
Or or up here to the mayor's office, or my office, and quite honestly, I'll tell you all kind of horror stories about people getting hurt in that. You know, beyond hurts in city homes, it happens. It happens in council chambers too, always be mindful of that. Be vigilant always, so I warned everyone. So we're looking at at reinstalling some kind of a wall at CED that would be able to control, regulate access, as well as going up the stairs, up to the second floor. Yeah, my preference is that this room, that council chamber, would all be on the main floors and staff would all be up. That way, the public, the public comes in for access, they don't penetrate the building, they go straight into the room, that just goes to hell, I understand. Here, you have to penetrate this building in order to get where you're going. You know, goes against all, all safety-related planning for any kind of government building. You know, you can't walk into most government buildings without going through metal detectors or anything else anymore, so. Yeah, we're gonna look for some money to do that, perhaps it'll come out of the contingency in this year's budget, and I'm just pointing that out, right? We've already talked about the Riverside Tennis Courts, one point seven million, there's zero budget. Okay, this does not include the the Futsal Courts either, I forgot to add it here. Pretty debate last year about Futsal, that's another issue that needs to be added to the list. And then the parks inserting any infills, there's zero budget for that, it's about one point six million. There's another thing that's missing from there, I realized that after I looked down, that's ADA Illinois accessibility improvements required by the Attorney General's Office. Because we're still under investigation for that, there's, out here, we're simply waiting for the report. In terms of how many ADA accessibility issues we have on our public properties. That will require remediation, and not all at once, but they will ask for a plan and a budget, and they will expect that annually results will happen through the main building improvements. Is that pretty fair, I'll say that. So knew it was coming, still haven't seen it, I don't have that magic number. So these are what I would consider to be the budgetary pressures of all of the, to normal. You know, how do you guys deliberate what we're going to do with the CIP, what we're gonna do with the roads? How to best prioritize these things? We're all here, full staff is accessible to you, you know, answer questions anytime, sit down with you, I don't need to be in every. You need to talk to Eric about something, the parks, please reach out. You know, or David Dreyer, he loves to have a talk with people, talk about engineering. Tony has, Tony has the nicest view of the city, it's got, it's rough, and he has good water there to drink. Chief, police chief will buzz you in, fire chief, but you know, than that, we're, we're here, we're easily accessible now. So just sharing that with you, and got a great CIP, got a great program, everything looks good, the question is, is what are we gonna advance, you know, budgetarily for next year? You know, because some of these things can wait, some of these things are mandatory, you can't avoid. And then what can we do in between with the alternative revenue sources, which Carol presented yesterday, whether it's amusement tax, hotel, hotel tax, sales tax, property tax, I mean. You know, whatever you do to increase any kind of taxes, my only warning would be is that it's not restricted. That it's, it is restricted resource use specifically for infrastructure. That's where you want it to go, and I think the public supports pillar one more than the other two pillars. Will, they'll join you happily to see that money going into their roads and their alleys and their sidewalks, right? As long as you restrict them, otherwise it ends up in the general fund, and people will accuse it, accuse us of having moved it around. We don't wanna do that, we wanna hear more pieces, I'll just give you a treat at any of those increases outside of the utility, utility rate study is done, whatever that is, I think I considered that. This other discussion raised three point one million, I think, has to be in your budget. Then reported even separately in the budget, and then reported by the audit of several. That was the same, that's the safe way to do it. Politically true to where it's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, so.
I wasted shorts.
That, that whole goal is to have you thinking about all of these things you have to get done, and giving feedback to staff as we go through the summer into October, when we will have multiple meetings for the budget in this, in the month of October, where these things get decided.
Yes, that's true.
And we may be trying to come back early on with CIP, just with an engineering conviction direction on projects to get going. We can kind of button up the existing revenues, and then we can talk about any new revenue during that, um, actual, like, process.
Well, thank you very much, and you, but you have, I don't see any hands raised. So we'll move to our miscellaneous business, if you could, um, everybody has gotten the notice of our the left weekend June, adding up the hearings on the six seven project. I was notified, I know, Bobby, Bobby told us, if you recall, that it's best if you're, if you're there, if you're able to be there. But actually, we have to have a forum, so I would like to know who is available when, so that we know we have a forum for every day, in case it goes beyond one or two days. And what I wrote down, and please correct if I'm wrong, this is a checklist, is a Monday night meeting, six AM. Correct, on the twenty-seventh, and daytime starts nine AM, but I am not clear if it's all day or if it's a three-hour hangover.
I don't, I don't, I think that's fine, I think that when they, when they, they will launch, and will get to a certain point, and and the judge, so to speak, will, hearing officer, hearing officer will probably go eight hours, and then he'll call. He'll give up, he'll just call it, you know, and then recomplete the following day, continue until done.
Understood, but if people are trying to make plans, so that we have a forum. They should understand that when it starts in the morning, you're kind of committing for the day.
No, I would say yes.
So that's, I understand every people have jobs outside of this one for sure, but we have to have five people at least. So, um, I usually like to do due to goals, but I really just need y'all to tell me who's coming. This is the, the, um, nature of recycling hearings, we got, we got an email from David Silverman of several weeks ago about the dates. And then you are all to to put in your times you are free this week, I think some people are scheduled tomorrow, and some are scheduled Thursday to meet Silverman, right? And then the week of the twenty-seventh is when we start, yeah, is when we have to have a forum, five people. So, um, I'm gonna need that by the end of this week, I think, so comfortable going into that week, I need your availability. According to the times listed in the, the hopings, or the notice, it was a notice.
It's a, it's a notice, it was, it was released by George Wheeler, that's representing LRS.
It's in your email. Yes, that's true, yes.
Um, so do we, because I was looking at the Wednesday, June twenty, but is that a continuation of the hearings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but I don't have to be on the other one, right, I can go to that one for the off.
There will be, there will be there's gonna be an opportunity for LRS to present its case, that they have met all the criteria, that is what their, their role is. That's what George Wheeler will do, in leading his witnesses through the discussion. So he will present his wish, his, his votes. In turn, we have an attorney who works for the staff, who may have questions of their witnesses, second court. And then we will, of course, ask, those questions will be asked by, by the attorney who represents the city. Mr. Silverman represents the interest of the mayor and the city council, that's his role in all of this. So when they're done and they rest their case. Then at that point, then very likely, our attorney will then call our own witnesses, who's with these members of staff that have actually discussed the project.
So the answer is, we can come in and out of each day in, in terms of your availability, but we have to have five people there scheduled, ready to be there, so that we have the forum. Yes, that's true.
Is, uh, is reloading the timings an option?
Oh, that would make sense if they have, if they have work, they should be able to. But still.
You would have to be in attendance, so.
Yeah, yeah, you can have a black camera.
Yeah, you have to be on camera and all that, but in terms of, you know, the driving back and forth or something like that, or
Right.
working from home or something like that, um, yeah, does everyone understand that when you're online, you're attending a meeting online, you have to have your camera on? Get turned on, that's, that's all of my goals. So does everybody real, just understand by Friday to meet your availability for that week, so we have five people. I, I, I know for the online stuff, like, I have to be in the room, you have to be in the room, maybe you have to be in the room. I can maneuver my schedule, make sure I'm one of five every day. I will do that, but.
Yeah, the other.
The location's here.
And the location will be here, I believe it's in Chambers.
Debbie and I will be there the whole time.
That's two for sure are there the whole time. For those of you who can't be there the whole time, one of the things that you're going to get prior to having to make any decision. Which won't be probably till early August, allowing time for the hearings to take place through the end of June. And then allowing time for the hearing officer to compile his findings, and all the courts' deniers, or three reports that everything, every word is under oath, every word is gonna be recorded, it's gonna end up in a man, in a transcript. Those transcripts will be shared, so for some reason, you can't be there, for some reason, one day, you're interested to hear what somebody might have had to say. We'll have copies of those transcripts, probably electronically, so you can sit down at home, over your home, and listen to what was said. You know, and then at that point, sometime in August, I'm guessing, if everything goes as planned, right, if there's no problem or hiccups in August sometime, you'd probably make a decision.
Are we, are we able for the matter of making forum, to be able to do like half-days?
Switch out someone, are we?
So sure, switch people off.
Yeah, because I can say conferences, it would be much easier, I could probably do one full day and two half-days. It, but it, and I want, and we've gotta see where everyone else is at, I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just tell me what, tell me your half-day, tell me your full-day, whatever you need to tell me here, like just know that this is, as you heard, you know, this is an important, um, project decision, and being part of the hearings, I didn't realize, so you told me this, we had a forum. Sure, we, we don't miss that out. Okay, that's all I have under miscellaneous, of course. Anything?
I guess I'll do you two a half-days.
Okay, just write it to me by, by, in, in email this week, by Friday, it'll be good.
By Friday?
Yeah.
No, you're on.
Okay, so was that, anything for miscellaneous? Minin?
Open, Your Honor. Open, Your Honor.
Yes. Alright, and we are going into executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion to cancel the meeting in our executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, refund, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees by ILCF one twenty slash two C one.
So, she's by Murphy and Timian, vote Paul, please. All Chris and Rosal.
Yes.
Minin?
Hi.
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Minin?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
Mendez?
Hi.
We guys know.
We are only in the basement, thank you everyone for all your hard work done.
Great presentation.